Good evening, San Bernardino. I am so excited for us to be here tonight. We are going to do our bi-weekly, well, first and third, um, Sunday night agenda review. We have a lot to go over. I'm gonna give it a minute so that it can generate and everybody that wants to watch can be on. I hope you guys are having an amazing evening. It has finally cleared up just a bit and it's really nice. The snow yesterday was awesome, very, very unexpected. So this was super cool to see and I think that, you know, we've gone back and forth quite a bit between how much, uh, snow there is or what the record is. I've seen between nineteen forty-nine and nineteen fifty-seven posted about when it had last really, really snowed like this. Some people say two thousand and seven. So either way, I think it was great. It was just gorgeous and beautiful. And I think, you know, it hopefully, you know, all, everybody was safe. So with that said, okay, I see. Hi, Virginia. Hi, Paula. You guys are jumping on. The numbers are moving up. I don't want us to be super, super long because I know it's Sunday night and everybody's getting ready. So I'm gonna jump in uh, to something that just came up. Well, we'll cover something before. Hi, Scott. Hi, Ron. Before we jump into the actual city agenda. So let me show you guys some stuff real quick on here. Um, I need to make sure I pull this up. Okay. So I'm going to share my screen. Because there, there are a couple of, actually a new meeting that was presented to the public that we didn't know about has come along. So there is a special meeting tomorrow planned for the plan. And as you guys know, we had talked about this the previous, um, meeting being canceled because the basically the Community Economic Development Director forgot to post it. So at, um, the, the meeting has been has been scheduled twenty-four hours in advance, like this is an emergency. And one of the problems is, is that we know um, emergency meetings really matter. And looking at this material, there is nothing here that looks super important. There is nothing here that I don't think could have waited for another day. And so just be vigilant on it. I'm watching, you know, to see what happens. I can't be there. But here we are. Um, this is to look and, and here's what was such an emergency that they want to consolidate seven parcels into one? For they, in this, this item in particular had been a proposed storage facility in the sixth ward. And they were shut down. They were told, no, we don't wanna, you know, a storage facility here. We wanna build other things on our available property. And what the city is saying is like, oh, well, a part of that was this subdivision consolidation, whatever you wanna call it. And we need to get this done tomorrow. Hmm. I don't, I don't think so. And there's information in here that wasn't previously provided, like a whole SLA agreement and bidding. So I think there's more to it. I'm gonna look into it more. I just wanted to touch base on that right now. So let's get to why we are here tonight, which is the City Council Agenda for Wednesday. We have closed session. There are two items, which is Douglas Health v. the City of San Bernardino, uh, WCBA. And then David Wixtham versus the City of San Bernardino, WCBA. I'm going to make the assumption that this is workman's comp for both. And if need be, there's the case numbers. If anybody really wants to look into it, if you have anything you would like to comment on either one of these cases, you can go and give your three minutes. There's nothing that I see that I'm going to discuss. Then after that, we're gonna do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. They're gonna give a closed session report. Now, I do wanna say something. Uh, and I don't know if anybody else. Um, okay, let me, let me look at the comments. I won't jump on, uh, Paula and Virginia say that this item for close, uh, for the planning commission could have waited. I a hundred percent agree with you. It sounds very shady. And, and I, I, yeah, who's getting paid? Who, who all of a sudden has this friend in the city that can get them emergency planning commission meetings? Posted on a Sunday night. Let's not forget that all is required of a special meeting. It's twenty-four hours advance notice. So Sunday night, most people aren't paying attention. Everybody's already kind of pre-looked at these meetings coming up. I had. And now here we go. We've got this SLA agreement and, or not agreement, but SLA letter. And we have, uh, the, the, this desire that to, to do all of these things th- this quickly, couldn't wait. Well, maybe if you Dave, if Nathan Freeman had actually bothered to post the last agenda, we wouldn't be rushing today. Just gonna point that out. So okay, so back to the regular schedule. Um, the public comments. So if you're going to come to open session at seven P M., you can give your public comments for items listed and not listed on the agenda. We'll get to those. The city manager will provide their update. Oh, let me say, I, I'm sorry. The closed session report, I have been very happy. And, and I believe, uh, Paula Plunk, Ron Plunk and myself have been vocal in how, um, non-transparent the city has been in reporting what was happening in closed session. They weren't telling us if lawsuits had been settled. They weren't telling us how much we were paying or what had happened. And recently, over the last couple of meetings, there really has been, uh, I think a good effort, maybe on behalf, they haven't told us why, but I'm as- assuming the council as a body and the mayor have decided we need to hear. So that's been good. Public comments has been an issue. What we found out is that there is a resolution that was approved in two thousand and eighteen. And the mayor or the chair, which could be the mayor pro tem, has the sole authority to restrict the time on public comments. And we've run into this twice in the last two meetings where the mayor has said, oh, there's more than twenty of you. That's gonna be a long time for me to sit here and have to hear you. We're moving you to, from three minutes to ninety seconds. And so people come to the meetings and they are prepared for three minutes. Now, it's not everybody takes three minutes. And for most people, public speaking is not their forte. And so they take their time in their presentation to get everything they wanna say to the council into this. And now the mayor has decided this isn't a, a priority for her. Theodore Sanchez decided it was not a priority for him to hear the public because it's important that he does the public's work without actually hearing the public. Now, I have to give a big shout out to Fred Charette and Councilwoman Kimberly Calvin because they both were like, hey, no, we're not, we're not doing that. I was disappointed. My councilman, Damon Alexander, didn't have anything to say. So it was, i- it is important. So there we go. And then they get to give their updates, which could go anywhere from five to twenty minutes apiece. So let's talk about the importance of time. First up, we have the consent calendar. Now, I've gone through this a little bit, not anything in depth, cuz I wanna do that together. But I have to say, I'm really not impressed with the things that are just on consent. And, and we've talked about this before. If you're new, which I know some of you are, thank you guys for coming into this discussion. The consent calendar is supposed to be for non-controversial items. Things that you would never question, things that you would, um, it wouldn't be, it would be kind of like a no-brainer, right? Like, oh, we're going to approve payroll. Of course, why wouldn't we? But there are just some things I really believe are too high dollar. And we'll get to that. Or too important not to make sure that everybody understands what they're voting on. So number one, resolution approving and adopting an amended conflict of interest code pursuant to the Political Re- Reform Act of nineteen seventy-four. Now, as everybody that has been with us for these last four years know, the conflict of interest has been on the forefront of everything that we have been talking about. The pay-to-play, the political donations, the appearance of, of preference in our RFP process. The lack of desire to go out for bidding for political donors in, in, in contracted services. I mean, it is non-stop, right? Non-stop. Receiving money the night before you go and take a vote on an item that will affect a political contributor. This is what they're going to be talking about Wednesday night. But it's not actually a discussion item. This is just something approve or disapprove. We're not gonna talk about it. So let's talk about it because I think it's really important for you guys to know what this means and what it'll affect. So it's gonna be on page twelve. And here we go. It is recommended that the mayor and city council of San Bernardino adopt Resolution twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three dash three for approving and adopting the amended conflict of interest pursuant to Political Reform Act. So the Political Reform Act of nineteen seventy-four requires all public agencies to adopt and maintain a conflict of interest code. The act further requires that agencies regularly review and update their code as necessary as directed by the code reviewing body or when a change is necessitated by changed circumstances. So let's see what these changed circumstances are. If you really wanna read all that, I mean, you can. I just want us to get a little further. The discussion. So pursuant to the Political Reform Act, the City Council directed staff to, one, conduct a review of the city's conflict of interest code to determine if a change in the code was necessary. Two, file a biennial notice regarding the results of the review no later than the required deadline. And three, amend the city's code pursuant to the act if necessary. Cool. I'm good with that. That sounds, that sounds super transparent. Attach as a legislative redlined version of the proposed amendment. The proposed revisions are based on the establishment and recognition of new positions that must be designated. The revision of titles of existing positions and delineation of position titles that have been abolished and/or positions that no longer make or participate in making governmental decisions. Okay, so this right here. That doesn't sound like something we should be really looking at. Okay. The disclosure categories listed below identify the types of economic interests that the designated position must disclose for each disclosed category. Disclosure category to which the designated position is assigned. Investment means financial interest in any business entity, including a consulting business or other independent contracting businesses. Okay, here we go. So number one, all investments in business positions and source of income, including gifts, loans and travel payments that are located in do business in or own real property within San Bernardino. Category two, all interests in real property which is located in whole or part within or not more than two miles. So the boundary lines, right? Two miles. Uh, all, number three, all investments in business positions, business entities and sources of income, including gifts, loans, travel payments. Okay, when we all took a trip to China, that are engaged in land development, construction or acquisition. Okay, we're gonna talk about that. Uh, category five, all investments, business positions and income from business entities and source of income, including gifts, loans and travel payments that provide services, materials, machinery, vehicles or equipments of the type purchased or leased by the city. Oh, we could talk about a leasing agreement right now. All investments, business positions and incomes included by loans and travels, uh, by any designated position, department, unit or division. Hmm. Okay, so there's a bunch. Let's see what it says. It is recommended that the mayor and city council of San Bernardino adopt Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-four approving the adoption to the amended conflict of interest pursuant to the Political Reform Act. Okay, well, but is that, that's everything. So everything here will be a category as far as what is in a political conflict of interest. So anything that, that falls in that if you've taken money within a certain amount of time, if you have, are, are, are do, are not only a, a political don- donator, but you have a, a stake in a contract in the city, these will all things be things that have to be claimed. I think it's awesome. I think it's great. I think we need to make sure the council's very clear on this cuz, you know, catching them on so many things. I- i- it's a lot. And I, I really believe something as thorough as this, as in-depth of an analysis, as far as their seven hundred forms are concerned. We should probably do more than just the, sign on the dotted line, but that's my two cents. Ron said, if there is a mistake on the agenda for a specific item, does a mistake invalidate this item for the meeting? Um, it depends. If, if they catch it prior to the meeting, they can make, uh, they have to make a, a, a public uh, they have to make a public notice and they would have to, um, oh, you wanna keep going? Okay. They would have to make a uh, or I'm sorry, they would have to provide that change in writing to the public. So i- i- it really depends. They could just pull the item and go through it. Scott wants me to keep going through the red line. Absolutely. I can do that. I just didn't wanna too much on one if that was boring you. Okay. So conflict of interest. Okay, one red line is gonna go from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three. We're updating the date. We'll go through all the red lines. So here we go. Okay, it has been determined that the positions listed below are other city are other city officials who manage public investments. These positions are listed here for informational purposes only. Oh, okay, Scott. Good catch cuz here we go. Investment consultants. And we're, and we're blanking out the finance manager and deputy city treasurer. Okay. Um, now, I know we no longer have a city treasurer because of the, the changes. I know we don't have a, a, a deputy city treasurer. We don't have a finance manager. Now they're called an investment consultant? That's interesting. That's interesting. Accountant managers now accountant three. Okay, the accountant division manager. Okay. We have an administrative analyst, administrative division manager. We've gotten rid of the service manager and service officer. Okay. We've added the administrative supervisor and executive assistant to the city manager. Agency director of administrative services. Now, let's talk about this. We don't have a city, uh, Scott, we don't have a city treasurer because the treasurer position, which was interesting, the, the role that our city treasurer played was really not as, as the financial overseer as we would think. It, it was kind of an antiquated position. And when I was at city hall, they're really, they really, you, no one could really tell you what the city treasurer did. They didn't oversee the finance department. So, um, I, I, I'm, I'm interested in this because right now, this, where it says agency director administrative, like the agency director of administrative services. That is the finance director. Barbara Whitehorn is the finance director who has also been named the agency director of administrative services. I don't like this. I mean, I'm gonna be honest, like, I'm really glad we're going through this. Um, I think it's convoluted in, 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 in a way that it's hard to really understand who, who is doing what. Like who, because it really should just say finance director. And as we saw at the top, it doesn't. It says financial consultants. Interesting. Um, the categories are important, like how, how they all subdivide. Uh, so it said you have animal services manager, animal services supervisor. Instead of the applications development, you have an I T manager. Okay, aquatic supervisor, that's fine. Building official assistant buyer, deputy city clerk two. Is, you have a buyer now, that's fine. Assistant to the city manager. You have two of them. Associate planner, budget division manager. That's new. You have a grants assistant that used to be the C D B G housing assistant. Okay. You have a community services center advisor, a supervisor, community services program coordinator. Council administrative supervisor, custodial supervisor. These are new. Deputy director of housing, human resources and I T. You have a deputy library director. I don't know. I don't even know who that is. Here's your director of finance, which is why I say this administrative services is kind of interesting because it's a dual function. Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Officer, Economic Development Project Manager. A bit top-heavy. Oh, yeah. I mean, this is but this, so here's the thing though, but thi- thi- this is all based on disclosure. This is what they have to disclose. And what level they have to disclose it at. So uh, let's see, cuz I, it, you can't e- e- as a public servant, you have a responsibility depending on what you touch i- as far as what you have to tell. So N P D S manager, N P D S inspector. Parks and landscape. Wow. Okay, and the list goes on. So all of these are the updated titles or they're gone now. Um, consultants, consultants, new positions. Individuals serving as consultants as defined in F P P C regs or a new position must file under the broadcast disclosure category set forth in this code subject to the following limitations. The city manager may determine that due to a range of duties or contractual obligations, it is more appropriate to designate a limited disclosure requirement. A clear explanation of the duties and statements of the extent of the disclosure requirements must be in a written document. The city's manager's determination is a public record and shall be retained for public inspection. So at least if anything changes, I'm hoping, but here's the thing. Now, I've, are you reading it like I am? That a clear explanation of duties and statements need to be a public record, but how would we know? Are they required to go to the mayor and council and tell them, hey, I've made this change in designation? Like, here's my thing about public records, as you guys all know. How would we know to, to request the public records? How would I know the city manager has determined a reclassification for someone if it's not publicly announced? So something I'm gonna ask. Okay, Scott, you're on the same page? Okay, good. So I think this is like I said, and here, like, this is all brought up by the city attorney, which we don't know how I feel about that. The disclosure categories listed below identify the types of economic interests that the designated position must disclose. So to which the designated is the signed. So all those numbers is where they're designated in the categories. All investments here or there. And within whatever. And then let's keep going down. This is going to be the actual policy. This is, I don't believe. Okay, so this is the unred line. This is everything that was above put into writing. I'm gonna tell you, I'm right, I'm a a, a regular Joe Lean. And I think I would need clarification on this as if I was a council member or if I was the mayor, I think I would really want this spelled out a, a little bit more as far as roles and responsibilities. So I'm gonna have to speak on this. Cuz I let's, let's, my thing is, is there are so many people involved, right? So this is not just the council. There are so many classifications listed here. Don't we think that it was probably the most advantageous that all city employees understand the requirements of, of which has now included or excluded them? My own, my own thought. Okay, I hope that was, wasn't too much for you guys, but I see you were into it, so this is good. Okay, number two. Approved professional services agreement to Southern California Crossroads for hospital-based community violence intervention services. Okay. It is recommended that the mayor and council authorized the city manager does need to execute the professional services agreement with Southern California Crossroads. And to issue a purchase order not to exceed one point one million dollars. Okay, look, here's my thing. Uh, reading it, does it sound like we out, we need it? I don't think I can disagree. One point one million dollars on a rubber stamp? Not so much, not so much. So let's go to page sixty-one and just take a look at it. And this is what the council's supposed to be doing, you guys. The, if they do have any questions, right? We question number one. If anybody feels a certain way about it, they should be pulling this. They should be questioning. So on February eighth, not too long ago, uh, no, I'm sorry, over a year ago, uh, the Office of the City Managers V I P Program submitted a proposal to the California Board and State Community Corrections and Violence Intervention and Prevention Grant Program. The grant submission by the city was focused on building capacity for the violence intervention program. Specifically, hospital-based violence intervention services. Super, super important. I, I totally agree, like I said. On January eighth of last year, staff received a notification that the city's grant submission was approved. Nice. At the September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two meeting, the mayor and city council authorized the city manager to administer the grant program on behalf of the city and award the amount of three point eight million dollars. The State Board of Community Corrections Grant period for performance ends December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. Okay, we've got a couple of years. Uh, detecting and interpreting conflict. So this is all the program does. This is super awesome. Um, mobilizing the community to change norms. So here we go. Let's get to the discussion. The city's application to the Violence Intervention and Prevention Grant Program, staff proposed securing a nonprofit agency with extensive experience providing hospital-based community violence intervention and prevention services. Okay, so this went out for bid. This is good. Specifically with experience implementing summer violence reduction strategies, strategies, training and evaluation capacity in order to retain a violence intervention service provider. So this is someone that's going to remain in the hospital with um, with providing these types of services. So Southern California Crossroads is a registered nonprofit corporation, public benefit in good standing with the California Secretary of State and Franchise Tax Board. Very good. Uh, as an expert in the field, SoCal Crossroads has over eighteen years of proven cap- capacity of providing supportive services to youth and young adults in the areas of violence prevention, intervention, hospital-based and school-based services across Southern California. Okay, Crossroad currently provides you services in Gardenia, Watts and community engagement in North Hollywood. The Crossroads is hospital-based violence intervention provider in California Hospital, Harbor, U L, UCLA and Saint Francis in Lynwood. Okay. Oh, now let's see. A request for proposal was not conducted for this professional agreement. My bad. Now remember, right? Information is vital. I'm assuming they went out for bid because they said they had a grant, but they are telling me they did not. A request for proposal was not conducted for this professional agreement. All three of the existing local V I P service providers that could be considered are already receiving American Rescue Plan Act funds for V I P related services from the city. Furthermore, outside of agreements with the city, staff believe these service providers are fully funded at the capacity of the multi-year contracts with other local agencies. Such as Loma Linda University Hospital, San Bernardino County Probation Department, San Bernardino School District. Department of Justice and the Bureau of Justice Administration. Project Save Neighborhoods. Staff do not believe there are additional qualified vendors that can perform their required services. Outside of Southern California Crossroads. In the previous two bid requests, the same three existing providers providers submitted proposals and were rewarded. I'm sorry, and were awarded an agreement with the city, no other qualified local vendor responded to the bid request. In an effort to streamline and fulfill the city's agreement with the California State Board and Community Corrections. The staff prepared and submitted single source justification request in lieu of an R F P. To the city's procurement office for this agreement. Upon review, the procurement manager approved the single source request for professional services agreements with Southern California Crossroads. I'm so glad we looked into this. Now. Funny enough. I am teaching procurement this semester for my master's students. Which is basically teaching them about the R F P process for public organizations. I'm not okay with this. I. I hate to get super technical and I wanted this to be super quick, but I, my. The city just assumed, their assumption is that no one else can provide these services. They went out and found someone that they believe can, fair enough. And decided, and I'm gonna tell you something about our procurement people that I'm not too excited with. We've got someone there called Precious Carter and another person called Princess, I have called our procurement people multiple times. And I, they don't answer the phone, I don't even know if they work at the city. So and I've asked questions, I have asked questions specifically concerning equal opportunity bidding. And our ability, right, this is a one point one million dollar grant. How do we build in the capacity for smaller nonprofits that exist in this city? To to work in conjunction and build their own capacity? Um. Uh this to me is not okay. I I don't feel like this is, this is an unknown, as Paula's pointing out, as Scott's pointing out and Ron. This is a non-transparent process for single source justification. Because you know what, the city did a single source justification for leasing their fleet vehicles. And we had a vendor right across the street who was totally capable of handing those needs. I'm not good. I'm not good, I'm gonna question this, so. If you guys question this, please put it together, I'm Thomas, hopefully we can get our beautiful city back on the right path. You need all the residents to stand up and vote out who they need to, I agree with you, look. The reason I I do this agenda review is because. My hope is, is that our council members, which I know some of them are, I know some of them do this religiously with their groups. But I think we need to do this collectively. Because you have to be engaged, you have to be educated and that, Thomas, is exactly how we empower our community to vote for change and do different things. So reading this, I I'm not good, I really, I am questioning the R F P process or lack thereof in our community, so. There we go, I will, I'm gonna ask whoever to pull this one. Okay, item three, declaring intent to annex territory, this is Ward three. Uh Valley View and Industrial. So this is the service districts that we have talked about, um. We don't need to go through, but how you feel about it. One way or another, look, if you're in that area, if you're in Ward three, the investment portfolio where we are putting our money left and right. This is good to know, the and 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 if, I hope a council member, if they have any questions, will pull it. They they're going to pull the commercial payroll, super good, this is something right, non-controversial. The library revenue and budget expense budget, so they're accepting a funding of ten thousand. Three hundred and three dollars from inland library system. Eight thousand six hundred and seventy one dollars and twenty one cents from C T C Technology and Energy and two hundred dollars from the San Bernardino Emblem Club. Okay, nice, and they're authorizing the agency director of administrative services, who is actually the finance director. To amend their budget to include nineteen thousand dollars in both revenue and expenditures. Now, here's the thing, I'm super excited to see the library, but I was just at the library board, if anybody saw my video. And the city is trying to stop the public from being able to rent out the Bing Wong Auditorium where the council meetings are being held. I don't support that because as you guys can see, the library doesn't actually get a bunch of money every, you know. Year, they have a very limited scope of revenue, and so. This is good for them, but I think we can do far better, so. I support the library, keep going. Number seven, task order issued to wildland engineering for augmented engineering services pursuant to professional services agreement. For on-call engineering services, all wards. authorize the agency director of administrative services to issue issue a purchase order in the amount of ninety nine thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Hmm, that's not, we're we're not gonna do that. Let me see, and why? So again, non-bidier, non-bidders, they're on contract. They wanna give them up to, and this is why I don't like the limits, ninety nine thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. So they have services for street construction, storm, storm drains, wastewater, structural design, a whole bunch of stuff. They processed a thousand twenty land development permits, you did a lot last year, super happy for you, that's what you're supposed to do, right, as we move up. And the N P D S program ensures that the city complies with the N P D S and M S four program. Regulated by the state of California Regional Water Quality Board, okay, first of all. Let's. Talk about the N P D S and Ken Watson. Because any desire for me to wanna give more money, ensuring that the N P D S program is doing anything. I'm not there yet because they allowed illegal grinding to take place in our city with the approval of the N P D S manager. So. What I, what are we doing? Who, where is the oversight, like really, where is the oversight? Due to the increased workload of the land development manager, who is currently serving as the acting city engineer and deputy engineer. Of engineering, uh deputy director, okay, let's talk about Susan. Tam, Pam. Increased workload, first of all, why did you fire Alex Kishda? Without telling anybody any reason why, and then you put this lady on top of these duties. Without thinking about how you were gonna handle this workload. The same lady who was on the emails with Ken Watson, watching illegal grinding going along, lying to the residents. And now we need to increase our contracting services? Why would we continue to give our money to outside firms? We are very aware of the workload, they're telling us that last year alone, a thousand twenty permit applications. And you're now all of a sudden acting like you didn't know we were gonna need more people? Who does, who does Daniel Hernandez know? That needs more contracting money? Cause that's what I wanna know, I wanna know why the director is super good with giving away city funds. To wildland engineering. Trans tech engineers. I don't, uh. I think, I think the council should probably question this. Because they went from fifty thousand to now. Almost a hundred thousand. Like, uh. So, okay, I I don't support this, I hope someone pulls it. I I want us to be transparent with our money and with our vendors, I really do, and Mercedes, yeah, conflict of interest. I in in the previous one, in this one, like, it just seems to me like this is not something I just wanna see passed by. And I know our meetings run long. But shouldn't we have all the information first, like? I think, okay, number eight, the bid rejection for construction. Contract awarded, oh, in pavement rehabilitation, let's look at this, does that sound like it's a nothing, who knows? So we're on page four, we'll go to page three fifty. Okay, from Daniel Hernandez, oh, let me get out of here, I don't know what I pushed, I pushed the button, there we go. Bid rejection. It's recommended that the mayor and city council of San Bernardino adopt a resolution rejecting the bids for construction of the citywide pavement. Rehabilitation at twenty one locations. So the background on November twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. A pavement management analysis was completed, which used scientific methods to rate the conditions of all public streets in San Bernardino. Or in the city, street segments, intersections and. Interf- oh, intersection to intersection were rated based on the remaining services, um. Life, R L, R S L, okay, that's fine. In anticipation of this work, the citywide pavement rehabilitation for twenty one locations. And those are all the ones was adopted June sixteenth, twenty twenty one by the mayor and council. The C I P established measure S and measure I funding in the amount of five point eight five five million dollars in. The project to rehabilit- rehabilitate the following streets, so third ward, Belvidere. To Mountain View to K, twenty seventh to Davidson to Little Mountain. Temple to Medical Center Drive to end Ward six, Alameda Street to Rialto Avenue to Newport Ward one. Uh. I'm just gonna let you guys look at the list for a minute, Oak, Sonora, Ralston, Pepper. I'm trying to see if my street is on here, let me look, look at, H Street, Ohio, Dallas, okay. Let's see what there's, why they're saying no. Project one three five one one to provide pavement rehabilitation was advertised for public bidding on December twelfth and thirteen. In San, in the San Bernardino County Sun Newspaper, F W Dodge Construction Bid Board, High Desert Plan. Plan Room, San Diego Daily Transcript, Subhub Online Plan Room, Reed Construction Data, Bid America Online, okay, so everywhere. Three sealed bids were received and opened on January twelfth, twenty twenty three. The lowest apparent bidder was Mattage Corp of San Bernardino, which bid for fourteen point two seven two. Two hundred, the lowest bid was significantly above the budget allocated for the citywide pavement rehabilitation for twenty one locations. Staff recommends the city reject all bids submitted for the subject property at this time. The public code section states the mayor and council have the authority to do this, okay, let's talk about this. Let's talk about this. So the city allocated in their C I P. Can be, uh capital improvement projects, five point eight million dollars. Which was given to them as a base pro- projection. And the lowest bid came in at fourteen million dollars. Now the city wants, Daniel Hernandez wants to reject this, saying that. Oh my god, this is way too much, one of two things has happened, one of two things has happened. One, this is an outrageous bid. This is outrageous. Well. According to the two other bidders, it's not. It's not an outrageous bid because they were above Mattage. Number two, what this is telling me is that the city public works department did not properly assess the cost. They didn't assess the cost, they didn't adjust for inflation, they didn't adjust for usage tools, whatever. And so now, and Scott, I see you, and Paula, I see you, I'm gonna get to this, right? So now what they are telling the mayor and council is you have the authority to to reject this bid. Okay, okay. The city of San Bernardino put out a bid for the downtown demolition of the mall, downtown mall demolition. And they estimated. The cost would be ten million dollars. They they received bids sixteen, eighteen, up to twenty nine million dollars, depending on the level of demolition. And then they got a low-cost bid at seven million dollars. That didn't have half. Of the required demolition. Uh. Scope that that had been put in there. And did Daniel Hernandez go and write anything like this to the council and say, hey, we should prop, the lowest bid really is too low? It's not with, we think that this is probably a problem, no, he did not. He pushed that bid forward, knowing it was twice as low as its next competitor's bid. And didn't have a single thing to question, tell me this isn't odd. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I honestly, it's okay, that's fine, but my own assessment is here we are. Ex- trying to reject fourteen million dollars, what we thought would cost us five, but we got no problem. Someone coming in at seven, well, we had already discussed it was gonna cost us ten, two years prior, without even looking at the cost of inflation. And and sixteen other people proved us wrong and told us. Yeah. Five million wouldn't begin to take care, take on the necessary street repairs, absolutely, Scott, I mean, you guys are. Five million dollars for twenty one streets? Come on, come on. So, okay, sorry, just, this is why this stuff needs to be pulled, uh it really does, I don't, I don't trust this for a second, I think. I don't even know how you would justify that, what that's telling me is public works did something wrong. And let's just, let's gloss over this, let's move on, let's, let's cover it up, so. Oh, they're gonna reject another one for Spicer Park, let's look at this, three sixty six. Here we go. So June of twenty twenty one, the county of San Bernardino Board of Supervisors passes the Local Fiscal Recovery Spending Act. To spend four hundred and twenty three point five million. Okay, the rehabilitation of Spicer Memorial Park was submitted to both the San Bernardino County and San Manuel Board of Mission Indians for funding. The county San Bernardino awarded nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the San Manuel Mission Indians awarded one million. The approved, the for the improvements to Spicer Park, on December, September twenty first of twenty twenty two, mayor and city council accepted the money. And authorized the agency director of administrative services to amend the budget to appropriate the one point nine five million dollars in the grant funding for Spicer. M- memorial improvement park, okay. Sorry, getting worn contacts and it gets a little fuzzy, um, the Spicer Park renovation project includes the demolition and replacement of the existing building. Field lighting upgrades, installation of synthetic turf, leveling and renovation of the baseball field. New scoreboards, bleachers, water fountains, concrete paving, prefabricated concession stands with bathrooms, A D A accessible facilities. Great. And general amenities improvements, the notice inviting bids was advertised for public bidding on December sixteenth, twenty twenty two. And December twenty second, twenty twenty two, in the San Bernardino County Newspaper Sun, Bid Plan America, E bids, city's website. Seal bids were received and opened on January twelfth, twenty twenty three, the city reviewed only one bid as followed. Quality light and electrical city of Bloomington, six point five million dollars. The city has reviewed the bid package and confirmed the quality of what, uh quality light and electric of Bloomington, California. Is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder with a total of a six point roughly five million. Since the city received only one bid and the lowest bid is significantly above the engineer's overall estimate. Staff recommends that the city rejects the bid submitted for the subject project at this time. Okay, again. Again. What, what was the projection? Is it, why is, why are we rejecting one bidder? At six point five, the city had received almost till two million dollars. What, what did they think we were gonna get for two million dollars, what, was the city not at all trying? To match any funding, would, did they think that we were, this is the thing, this is really what's bothering me, like. What was the anticipated expense? I I don't, I don't understand. I really don't understand what they thought there was not gonna be any out-of-pocket expense. For a complete overhaul of Spicer, given everything that they listed, right? All of these changes. Field expansion, scoreboards, bleachers, water fountains, concrete, prefabricated concessions and bathrooms, and you all thought you were gonna get that for two million dollars? They're gonna redo Nicholson Park and it's gonna cost them eighteen million dollars. What are we doing? What are we doing? And look, here's the thing about bidding, right? These are huge, these are huge, the RFP process, it's a lot of work. Months of work, a month at least in our city to get it done. And one person bids and you're like, yeah, no, thanks for, thanks for doing the work, but no. That makes people not wanna bid, by the way. All that work and you're like, nah, thanks, because what was your anticipated cost? One point nine million dollars to revitalize an entire park? Okay, I hope someone on the dais brings that up as well. We do. Okay, resolution adopting local roadway safety plan. It's recommend, okay, I don't know what that is, let's look at that real quick. Three seventy-two. The city applied and was rewarded a grant funding for rep- uh preparation of a local roadway safety plan, okay. Through the Department, California Department of Transportation. Uh completion of the roadway safety plan is required for the city to be eligible for future highway safety improvements. Oh, okay, I like that. Uh, they are being awarded, let's see. Uh, February third, the mayor and council adopted a resolution accepting the local roadway safety plan grant in the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. To improve the grant matching funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, so that'd be a total of two hundred thousand. Circulations of funds, on October sixth, twenty twenty-one, the mayor and council adopted the resolution approving an award for professional services amendment. In the amount of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, okay, come on now. So, okay, within a couple pennies. For the K O A Corporation. So, okay, so this is, they're going to process. This grant. It's not gonna cost us anything, there is no fiscal impact, I'm okay with that, I'm good with that, but it's good to know, I, I didn't remember this on the agenda. But I took some time off, so, okay. Um, Denny, I feel like everything is just dysfunctional in this city, it's maddening. Uh, yeah, you know what, here's the thing. It, it's, it really, the process is so twisted, eh, to the point of being dysfunctional. This is not how government runs. Well, in essence, it's not how it's supposed to go, eh, the thought that we have to go through this with a fine-tuned comb. Tooth comb is. It's kind of maddening. I, I, I'm, I'm just like. Well, and let's be honest, we don't trust our government. We don't trust Nathan Freeman, we don't trust Daniel Hernandez, we don't trust the council, we don't trust the mayor collectively. To do the right thing, because their track records show that they don't. Collectively, I'm not talking about individuals, I'm talking about the body. And and the city has come forward with so much nonsense that. It feels super dysfunctional because they should know better. They should know better, so. The acceptance of the Edward Ryan Justice Assistance Grant, okay, I like that, we're going to receive. Two hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. Alright, let's, what is that for though? What is it? See, let's just be a little, let's dive in, just, I just wanna know what it's for, what's a justice grant do? Is a sub-recipient of the Memorial Justice Grant, the grant is a. A formulary grant that is allocated based on the population and three-year average of reported violent crime. San Bernardino has been designated a disparate jurisdiction which allows the city to receive one and one-half of the county allocation, okay? I'm good with that. Not the crime, but the money. The San Bernardino County serves as a grant recipient administrator and fiscal agent of from, oh, JAG program and allowed. To charge each jurisdiction a five percent administrative fee. Okay, San Bernardino Police Department has received a grant award in the amount of, okay, it's a, it's a P P D grant. They could have just said that, they could have said, hey, you're a super high crime area, here's some money for your police department, I would say sometime. But now we know. Okay. Let me not move too far, okay, now we're in the discussion, this is the stuff that will actually be discussed. And it's a biggie, super, super biggie, I'm gonna try not to go much longer, you guys. Fiscal year, mid-year budget. Here we go, now, remember, last meeting, we were talking about. The upcoming. Uh, staffing issues for the mayor and council and the, the additions, right now, they want to amend the fiscal year budget. By five point nine million dollars as outlined, so we're gonna take a look at this really quick. Uh, five, four, five, here we go. Receive and file. Let's see, let's give you the background. In December of twenty-two, the mayor and council received a fiscal quarter report. Now, remember when to, we went to buy annual budget, means, means we were gonna kind of project within two years. Seeing who our finance director are, uh, who our finance director is, our, how our finance de- department is. Functioning under her, I'm not too supportive of this, seeing who the city administrators are. I'm not too supportive of this right now, I don't think there's enough eyes on it, by the way. Following the first quarter report, the city's finance team worked in close partnership with departments to put together a mid-year review of operating budgets. Each department prepared revenue, estimates and projected expenses for the remainder of the year. Which is Ju- July, by the way. In reviewing the budget performance with departments, the city's finance department and budget division identified areas in which there are potential savings to utilize for department needs. The areas in which additional support is needed to, for the remainder of the fiscal year. Further into this report, there is a detailed outline of the general fund expenditures and operating budget. Most of the departments remain within the target year, however, some departments have experienced unforeseen expenditures. That require additional funding. Let's take a look, let's take a look. Okay, general fund total, adopted budget. Was a hundred and eighty-nine million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. And that's going. Up a little bit, not much. Actual. The, the, uh, a- actual change will be seventy-one thousand, they'll go up to nine, a hundred ninety-nine thousand, a hundred ninety. Nine million, nine, two hundred and sixty-six thousand and twenty-three. So let's find out why, sales tax revenue. Which is nearly fifty percent. Let's get to the breakdown, sorry guys, if this is, this is budget stuff. Here's the thing, I also wanna note, because I've seen a lot of things, like, we need to look at their books, we need to deter. The budget's out there, this, this stuff is, is public record, this is public documents that's posted on the finances website. So anytime you wanna look, in fact, I'm going to. Pull the budget and we will do a specific video on this, so I don't wanna get too into the weeds, because eh, this could be. An hour on its own, I don't wanna bore you, but it really could be, we could. We could look, so let's, let's take a lookie real quick, oh, oh, oh. I already see something I don't like. So the mayor's office, the, it's, the adopted budget is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And a hundred, uh, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars a year, it's gonna stay that way. The council's budget was adopted at. Nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and. Eighty-two dollars and it's going to. Go within fi- uh, let's see, it's gonna, a- at the end of the year, it's gonna go up to nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, so. Not that much, but it's gonna, it's gonna go up. Here we go, uh, city clerk's office got a ten thousand dollar saving, that's good. The legal services, the city attorney's office is going up a million dollars. Now, I'm gonna guess, this is just me, that they're probably gonna s- quote. Litigation, litigation costs, yeah, cuz we consistently get sued, we had to pay Sandra Barra's attorney, we're still paying in the mayor's attorney. Uh, w- we got a lot of stuff going on, uh, we've got other, you know, uh, lawsuits against the police department, so there's, there's a lot going on. But a million dollars, million dollars, ugh. General Government Services is going up one point three million dollars. It's going from fifteen million. Yeah, six hundred and eighty-six to seventeen. So, or, yeah, you guys, it's just. It's a lot, other than that, everybody else is doing pretty well. So I can't wait to see the justification for all this stuff, eh, that's a lot, a lot of. Liability funding, fleet services fund. They're going up fifty-six thousand dollars. You wanna go through any of this, you can, it's a lot of backup material, I just. It's the, the city's increased in tort litigation since exiting bankruptcy, I'm sure. But come on now, y'all took a bunch of money. Okay, okay, so, we'll go, they'll, that'll be a very long. Preview next week, or I'm sorry, Wednesday, next week. Okay, after that, they're gonna do an introduction of an ordinance amending the municipal code for the hearings, if you. Are not. Current on your solid waste charges. So, if you're delinquent, you might wanna look into that. There's gonna be a public hearing on a community facilities district in Ward Three. And then substantial amendment to the fiscal year annual action plan, home investment partnership rescue plan, Home ARPA. This is a, this is going to be a public hearing, conduct a public hearing to draft home investment partnership allocation and substantial amendment. To the approved action plan and authorize the interim city manager or as does need to inter- execute any further documents. Oh, let's look at that, that looks, that looks cool. See, I'm gonna be a couple more minutes, you guys. So the ARPA was signed into law, they gave like five billion in federal funds, okay, great. The House U S HUD allocated Home ARPA funds to guarantee using home formula established in twenty-four. See, I won't read all that. The mayor and council conducted a public hearing and adopted a fiscal annual plan as an application for funding under Community Development Block Grant, okay, I remember that. Uh, let's go to discussion, in accordance with the city's citizen participation plan, a substantial amendment to the action plan is required. When the city changes allocation priorities, expects to carry out newer existing activities and change the purpose, scope, location. Or beneficiaries of an activity, any activity whose funding allocation is increased by more than fifty percent, okay? The city intends to allocate an additional four point, roughly three million dollars of Home ARPA funds to assist in financial support. Needed in de- designing construction and operating. Oh, I'm sorry, construction operation of the city's future navigation center, oh. Oh. So they're gonna take five million dollars from this, or this Home ARPA funding and put it into the navigation center. The navigation center will assist the city's vulnerable homeless population with income stabilization services. Job training, mental health services, case management and non-congregate shelter units. The Home ARPA fund allows for up to fifteen percent, seven hundred and fifty. Eight, some, but roughly seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand of the funds to be utilized for program administration. Lastly, the navigation center actively is aligned with the city's consolidation plan, continuum of care initiatives. To provide emergency temporary accommodations for the city's homeless population. Lastly, the city will address and incorporate comments received. During the thirty-day public commenting timeframe between. Janu- February sixth and March seventh, and a public hearing will be, what? When does all these notices go out? Maybe this was next to them, I don't know, I, apparently there was a public notice hearing. Something, sorry guys. Uh, so. Here's my thing. We are going to re-designate Home ARPA funds, which was specifically used. Home or ARPA funds can be used to fund activities, the primary benefit qualifying individuals and families. Who are at homeless and risk of homeless and other vulnerable populations and these activities. Develop and support affordable housing, tenant-based rent assistance, provision and support services. And acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter units, okay? Okay, fine. This money is, is allocated for this purpose. Portionally. We just declared a state of emergency. And this is why I didn't like the state of emergency that we declared, it came with no plan. No new plan, no plan to establish new funding initiatives. What it wrote solely relied on was things that we had already had in play. As far as programming and navigation center, which is they repeat, basically repeated everything in December seventh at their February meeting. And it, there was no new open sourcing, there was no new federal grant funding, there was no. And so what they're doing here is now they're gonna take this five million dollar allotment and they're gonna put it towards this navigation center. Which limits the scope of, of the totality of, of what this could be used to do. That's my only issue, not that I don't think we should build it, not that I don't think it should be allocated, but where, eh, where are all these additional funds? That are supposed to come with the declaration? Well, let's be honest, we went over this, the declaration is supposed to come with a plan, there was no plan. You are read, the city had already decided what they were gonna do with this funding. Prior to their declaration, there is no new, no new scope, no new ideas, and so you get no new funding. But, okay, alright, I'll go along with it, with what it, what it is. I'm glad we looked into it, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try and speak on that, we'll see how long these, this whole meeting goes, if it's an hour. And, uh, the last item to be considered is city organizational, organization realignment, all word, wards, councilman Alexander. Now. There is no explanation of this, I'm just gonna go right off the bat. City organization realignment, that is not in the purview of the council or the mayor. If you read the charter. The charter does not give the, the mayor or council members. Any power to work on the realignment of city organization. That is strictly in the wheelhouse of the city manager. In coordination with his department heads, I, I don't know any more of that, let's look at page seven sixty-six. If there's any additional material provided, there is not, so. I, I can't offer any real insight into that, other than just the title alone, sounds like a violation of the charter. But then again, last meeting, Dana Alexander wanted to, uh, allow the mayor to declare emergency orders in our city. And again, the mayor has no administrative function. So, that is what's coming up on our agenda, I appreciate you guys sticking this whole hour, eight minutes with me, I think, uh, we had a good time. Yeah, at least I did, and the more you know, the more you grow, and the more we can effectuate change in this city. So, if there's any last questions, hi Sophia, thank you for watching, um. Anybody else got any, I'm gonna give you, before I sign off, one minute, questions, comments, or concerns? Like, before I. Jump going in, I'm gonna try and jump back to my old screen. Before I leave. Anybody, thank you, thank you, Scott. There we go, I'm trying to. Put my face back in here. Okay, here I am, I'm back, I'm back. Okay, so, thank you guys so much, uh, thank you Sophia, thank you Scott, Paula Ron. Everybody else that I can't see that didn't comment, um, Denny. I'm going through, I'm going through Mercedes. Thomas, thank you, uh, if you have, Virginia David, thank you. So, if it, if you can, share this, please tell people, watch it, eh, and, and I try to. Vocalize as much as possible i- in the reading, because if you want, you can totally listen to this as a podcast in the car. When you're trying to fall asleep, whatever you wanna do, I, I, I want it to be at least more auditory than eh, than visual if it can't be for you. So, I'm gonna put this on YouTube, I will put it on my Instagram and. And if you guys have any additional questions, comments, or concerns, please don't forget to ask in the chat and share away. So I hope everybody has a super, super great night, and I always appreciate all of you watching, so. Thank you, talk to you later. Bye.